We start our order of proceedings by apologising for absence.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Bowles, councillor Cullen, councillor McNally, councillor Skinner, councillor Adams and councillor Fido.
Thank you very much. Item two, are there any declarations of councillors' interests? None, okay, thank you. Minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 13th of September 2019. The minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 13th of September 2019 be approved as correct record and signed by the chairman. All in favour? Thank you. I will sign them later. Item four is the chairman's announcements. The chairman states, since the last meeting of the county council, I have continued to carry out my civic engagement with Pride, visiting places and meeting people and organisations from all around the county. I would like to thank the vice-chairman councillor Mybrokes and his wife Jackie for their continued support and for representing us at civic functions when Trina and I have been able to attend. One highlight for me was when Trina and I were honoured to attend the Remembrance Day service held in Lincoln Cathedral at which I laid a poppy, a poppy reef actually, on behalf of the county council. It was a very poignant occasion and was well supported and tended by hundreds of people. A complete itinerary of civic engagement since the last meeting of this council are available from the civic officer upon request. I would like to take this opportunity to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Item five is questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors, chairmen of committees and subcommittees. I'm anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within time allocated. I intend to allow 45 minutes for questions. I am expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time available. When invited to ask their question, councillors should press the large button on their microphones to make it live and press it again to switch it off once they have finished speaking. If you recall, at the last meeting, we had one or two people who left the large button on, so I'd prefer when you've finished speaking if you would switch it off. So, the first speaker is councillor Ian Fleetwood for Collingdale. Councillor Collingdale.
Thank you, Chairman. Short Ferry is an ongoing disaster with 1,500 acres flooded over the last four weeks, causing stress and loss to local people and businesses. I am the district and county councillor for the flooded area, so what can the county council do to bring this devastation to a close as soon as possible?
Thank you councillor Fleetwood for the question. Obviously, this year has been an unprecedented year in terms of rainfall across Lincolnshire, and this incident, along with others, has caused untold devastation and impact on people. And I think as we reach Christmas, there will be a number of families who are not in their homes this Christmas because of flooding, and we should recognise that. And obviously, it's not just bricks and mortar, but I know in councillor Fleetwood's patch there is a very big caravan site, which is a permanent residence site, and those residents are now out of their caravans as well. So, we think about them at this time. Obviously, the breach in councillor Fleetwood's area is on a main river. Main rivers are maintained by the EA, and this council, the EA and the Drainage Boards and others are working in partnership to manage flood and water matters in the county. It's quite clear that after the events of this year, and the cost of that will continue into next year. We know that there are thousands of acres with crops still in the ground, so there's an impact on farmers. Seeds not being sown, so there'll be an impact nationally on food prices next year. So, we do need to strongly continue to make the case to government that Lincolnshire is of national significance in terms of national food security. So, we do need to continue to work together as partners, but we do need to understand that these incidents will continue in the future. This is not a one-off. We have to accept that there will be more high-intensity rainfall events, which will put pressure on the infrastructure of Lincolnshire in terms of rivers, and that we do need a proper long-term view of how we're going to manage that. And that is a conversation we're going to need to have, not just locally with our partners, but also nationally with government, because quite clearly, more money is going to have to be found to manage the infrastructure and protect people from the impacts of flooding. But also, we need to remember that Lincolnshire needs water to grow its crops, so we also need to plan for the periods of drought as well. So, there's a lot of work going on between ourselves and the Lett in that regard, but it is very clear that this has been an unprecedented year, and we do want to get people back in their home and issues resolved as quickly as we can, and we will work with our partners, particularly those with primary responsibility, to make sure that happens as quickly as possible. I'm pleased that councillor Poll and the MP were with councillor Fleetwood last Friday at the site, looking at the devastation, and we'll continue to work with councillor Fleetwood to make sure that everything that we can do is done. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. The next question is to councillor Martin Hill, OBE, from councillor Robin Renshaw.
Thank you, Chairman. The major political parties have promised an end to nine years of austerity by investing in the infrastructure. This could mean that Lincolnshire residents could lose out as we don't have sufficient staff resource to currently take advantage. What measures does the leader have available to overcome this impediment to moving Lincolnshire forward?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not sure I really would agree with the question in its principle in the first place, because, as members are well aware, despite the years of budget reductions which we've all suffered since 2010, this council has always had an ambitious capital programme, over £100 million a year, probably more, £150 million a year gross. And one of the reasons we have been successful, when you look at some of the projects which are currently underway, Lincoln Eastern Bypass is probably the most prominent of those, or Grantham Southern Bypass, the Castle, and various other projects, indeed flooding work which we are undertaking as well. In the past, for example, Louth and Horn Castle would have flooded this year if it hadn't been for the major flooding. I know there was some flooding, I believe, in Horn Castle, but thousands of houses would have been underwater if the work we haven't done. So, we've always been of the view that we ought to actually be ready to do stuff, and that does mean, when government funding is made available, that we are ready, both with the matched funding, but also ready with the schemes ready to go. And one of the reasons we have been so successful in that is that, unlike many councils who have aspirations, we actually back our aspirations up with actually practical measures. And for example, southern Lincoln Southern Bypass, which frankly was nowhere near anybody's top of priorities in the Midlands, is suddenly looking like it has a strong possibility merely because we have done all the work to make sure that it's ready to go, and there is a possibility now that it could actually get funding from government sooner rather than later. So, I think the principal is right, that we do need to be ready, but we're already doing that, and of course, if additional funding does come forward, we will make sure that we have the resources to do that. And obviously, as part of the budget, which will be the next council meeting, I think we will address some of those issues that you have raised.
Thank you for that. The next question is from councillor Alison Austin to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. My question, councillor Davies, relates to the problem of rainwater getting into foul drains and then causing sewage to spill out of manhole covers, flooding the road and nearby gardens, potentially endangering the health of residents. If you'll just indulge me in a moment whilst I expand slightly. This foul water covers drives and pathways and enters garages, often attached to the main property, where residents keep freezers and often store household items. As we know, only when water actually enters the living area of a property does it class as internal flooding and trigger a Section 19 investigation. On numerous occasions, however, when residents, many of them in bungalows, are unable to flush toilets and are prisoners in their homes because of the foul water lapping against the wall immediately outside their front doors. We're not talking about a third world country, we're talking about Lincolnshire. I refer in particular to Middlegate Road in Frampton, a busy residential road on the edge of Curtain, about three miles from Boston. However, at a recent scrutiny meeting, I learned from other members that there are several other locations with similar issues around the county. I'm told that in the Frampton situation, surface and foul water share the same system, which obviously predates much of the housing, let alone SUDs, and is not fit for purpose. There's documentation relating to this issue dating back more than 20 years. Please, can this council work with local MPs and the relevant water company to source funding for replacement of these antiquated sewers and bring this miserable saga to an end? Thank you.
Well, good morning, and thank you councillor Austin for that question. You're right, it's not just Frampton where there are combined grey and foul water sewers, it happens in a number of places across the county. It's a legacy issue of how things were done many years ago, but I completely agree with you, it's revolting, and I've seen it myself firsthand, and it's very unpleasant. I think the problem is going to be the cost and trying to persuade the water companies that they need dedicated sewers. They have done some work in some areas and replaced them, and there is an ongoing programme, but I couldn't give you any estimation as when it's likely to be completed. But to answer the specifics of your question, absolutely, we'll continue to work with partners to see what we can do to push this forward.
Thank you for that. The next question is from councillor Ray Wooton to councillor Sue Woolley.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. My question is, the Healthy Conversation exercise on the future of healthcare for Lincolnshire closed on 31st of October. Do you support the call by Grantham councillors to publish the results as soon as possible? Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I could make this very brief, Chairman, and just say yes. But, yes, as you quite rightly say, councillor Wooton, the Healthy Conversation did close on the 31st of October. It was an engagement exercise by our NHS colleagues, and I emphasise that it was an engagement. It wasn't making decisions and then just moving on. And I understand from health colleagues that they are literally, as we speak, in the process of collating all of that information together, and that will then help to inform their long-term plan, which, again, they are in the process of doing.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Mike Thompson to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Davies, Dodington and Wisby Parish Council have been trying to get a 7.5 tonne weight restriction regulatory order on the B1190 through Dodington Village for several years. There have been a number of accidents involving HGVs, the most recent some two weeks ago, when a lorry overturned on the verge, fortunately without causing serious injury. The issue is the cost of signage proposed by Highways England for their A46 infrastructure, which could be in the sum of £100,000. It has been suggested by Highways England that a lower figure could be possible if LCC Highways undertook planning and signage design, but clearly, the cost of this would fall on the county council. Could you please advise how this can be moved forward? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the question, councillor Thompson. This actually, dare I say, predates you, it's been going on that long, and me, I fear. Just for members' benefit, the issue here is, in order to get an HGV ban going through the village of Dodington, it requires signage on the A46 in the region of Dodington roundabout in order to demonstrate to vehicles coming that way, they can't turn left. Now, that stretch of the A46, the Lincoln bypass there, is a Highways England road, therefore, it's for them to put the signage up. Ourselves, when we put signs up, we've got a lot of experience of putting signs up, some may say too much experience, and we have a fairly standard approach to doing it that doesn't involve fresh designs and calms every time we put a sign up. However, Highways England insist that every single sign that's put up on their network is individually designed, individually stress-tested, and then wind calculations are done against it to ensure that it isn't going to blow over and cause some damage. The problem with that is that the initial estimation for the cost of exploring this that Highways England presented to us was about £35,000, just to do the design work, and they expected the installation costs to be topping in excess of £150,000. Ourselves, if we were to put up two signs, would cost us, you can appreciate, a fraction of that amount of money, and it would be impossible, I think, and it would be unreasonable for us to pay all of that money to do something on somebody else's network. So, what using, and councillor Thompson has tried to do, is through the auspices of the local MPs to say to Highways England, please, can we be more reasonable about this? Because when the shoe is on the other foot, they are extremely good at pointing out to us that any work's done on our network that they require, we end up footing the bill for, so I don't think it's unreasonable that they should foot the works for the bill on their own network. I think the greater question has to be, is it right that Highways England, because if they're doing this here in Lincolnshire, I suggest this is their general approach throughout the country, this is how they're spending taxpayers' money. And perhaps, maybe if they put up a few less signs at hundreds of thousands of pounds each, we may have a few more miles of dual carriageway in the county.
Stay where you are, Richard, because the next question is from councillor Kevin Clark. To you.
Mr Chairman, Richard, several of my residents in my area have rang up and said they've received a letter off Karl McCartney, clearly stating there'll be safer streets. The question they keep asking me, obviously, is, does that actually mean the lights are going to be kept on there?
Thank you, councillor Clark, and I'm pleased that you're enjoying Karl McCartney's vivid and positive campaign, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about how wonderful Karl McCartney is. The reality is, keeping people safe on streets is a complex matter and requires a lot of interventions to make people safe. Blanket approaches of just having lights on, or just introducing speed bumps, or just doing X, Y, Z, or just putting paint down, isn't the approach. What we try to do here at Lincolnshire County Council, and with some success, I'm sure even you would agree, is dedicate and target resources the most effective way possible. The reality is, for example, when I've done a visit with you around your local schools issue, there, a targeted approach of enforcement is going to be far more effective at addressing residents' concerns than having streetlights on at three o'clock in the morning. And I, for one, welcome the opportunity to have an MP for Lincoln who does support the county council and appreciates that local government and government per se is about getting things done, rather than wishing dictators happy birthday after they've died.
Thank you for that. The next question is from councillor Kate Cook to councillor Patricia Bradwell, OBE.
Councillor Bradwell, as you know, the Rainbow Stars Disability Hub opened in Sliford on the 2nd of November. Rainbow Stars is a recognised charity with over 1,200 members that supports those with autism and any disabilities, both mental and physical, and their families as well. Over 30 families already regularly use the hub, which is open daily and run entirely by about 15 volunteers. It only charges £3 a day in comparison with similar facilities such as the Glass House, which charges £65 a day. Councillor Hayes and I attended the opening, and I was really impressed with the facility, which really is a lifeline for many people. Councillor Bradwell, I know that you were invited to the opening and couldn't attend, but I would like to know if you and an officer could come and visit the hub to see for yourself the excellent facilities and support it gives to those with autism disabilities and their families, not just in Sliford but all over Lincolnshire, really. I know CAMHS are visiting on the 14th of January, and Adult Mental Health in Grantham are now signposting people to the hub, so I'd just like to see a bit more support from LCC for it. I know in our draft corporate plan, we've put that successful Lincolnshire means good, quality, accessible services, including for those in need and their carers, that make a real and lasting difference, and it also acknowledges thriving voluntary community groups that drive collaboration innovation. And I just feel that the Rainbow Stars Disability Hub more than fulfils these aims of our council, and I'd just like to see a bit more acknowledgement of the group from our council. I know that they applied to LCC for funding for an upgrade to the sensory room, and they were turned down for that, but I would just like some reassurance that any future bids they put to the council will be seriously considered.
Thank you for that, councillor. Bit so like me. Thank you councillor Cook for that. Yes, I am aware of the Rainbow's disability group, as you said, you wrote to me, and we responded back, because the council does not have grants that we can give clubs now. All the cuts that we've had in funding within special needs and that, we haven't got, or adults haven't got the funding to actually give to voluntary groups that we used to have many years ago, so I do apologise for that. But yes, I'm very happy to come along, it's just, you know, sometimes obviously my diary clashes, but yes, I'm very happy to come along, I'll see if I'm available on the 14th. And, you know, fully support these groups that volunteers do for us around the county. Obviously, you know, lots of people, it helps families, you know, and it helps the people who come to actually give them something to do. There's nothing worse than actually people who've got a disability, or they've got autism, and they're a young adult, you know, being in the home. We need to get them out and doing something, and there is, you know, lots of things that do happen around the county, like you were just saying with this group. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Maryanne Overton, MBE, to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Our roads remain a mess. We've worked really hard on them, and I've done a lot of reporting and a lot of work with Highways. We still have some really serious potholes right in the path of where wheels are travelling, sometimes at 60 miles an hour, with significant damage to vehicles, and hopefully, not to people so far, but it is a worry. My concern is that our funding, we've worked hard to get better funding into the county, and both I and, I think, our members on both sides of the House have worked hard to get better funding here. I've met with ministers too, and just pointed out the need and the impact. And I'd like to know how much you've been working with our MP in the past for this, because I understand the voting record is that she's actually voted against money for local government, and I'm just thinking, this is something we need to tackle so that we can have a unified force towards getting better funding for Lincolnshire.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, and I've just been advised that that's a typo next to my name, so the last text I sent my mother was going to be awkward, isn't it? She would have been so proud. In terms of the question, in terms of, I believe you were referring to the Lincoln MPs' voting record, in terms of supporting things, it's difficult to say that we've enjoyed unanimous support in Lincolnshire. I have to say, outside Lincoln, the MPs have been very supportive. I've met with them all on a regular basis, and I know they've consistently raised issues of funding quite extensively. I think they're very aware as MPs, certainly outside Lincoln, they seem to be very tuned in to what their voting population think, and are constantly badgering me, not only for road repair issues, but also communications issues more broadly in terms of superfast broadband. Undoubtedly, government support is required in order to make a lot of things happen. I'm pleased that we've won awards nationally for the standard of work we do. I'm very proud that this organisation was one of the two first in the country to get a Level Three endorsement for the way we look after our roads, and that shows that while we don't repair every road as quickly as we'd like to, the money we do get is absolutely critical. And I think one of the broader issues we have as an authority is this campaign we have for fairer funding, and ask ourselves, why is it that urban areas such as the big cities get more money? And unfortunately, it is true that the MP for Lincoln hasn't supported that campaign.
Actually, I hadn't checked the MPs' record for Lincoln. My concern was for Sliford and North Hycombe, where I live, and that was the record where it had been voted against, more money for local government. I recognise the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Alexander Moore to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking councillor Davies for organising the A1 Road Safety and Economic Growth Workshop that was held in Marsden back in October. Attendees I spoke to after the event found it a very useful and engaging session, and it was really positive to see Highways England taking on board comments from local stakeholders. And I'm sure you'll be aware that within my own division, the A1 is a big concern, as there are two identified accident hotspots, one being the Tolbar Road junction and one being the stretch between Fossum and Long Bennington. Now, Highways England cited funding as being the big stumbling block to delivering those much-needed improvements, so I'd like to ask today what more this council can do to lobby government for those desperately needed investments in the A1 through Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. It's good to see my local county councillor on top of local issues. You're absolutely right, the A1 is of critical importance, and it's increasingly a busy and dangerous road, there's absolutely no getting away from it. I felt the joint workshop we did with Rutland Council was very, very effective, and I think how we improve the situation is coming together regionally and potentially nationally to say, these are problems that we, here on the eastern side of the UK, we need addressing. Undoubtedly, the long-term solution has to be, in my view, that the A1 upgraded to a motorway all the way up to Edinburgh. It's ridiculous at the moment, one of the busiest and certainly, sub-regionally, the busiest road for us is at times, Griglot. You know, I'm up and down it quite a lot, as lots of people in this chamber are, and undoubtedly, it doesn't have the capacity it needs. And by Highways England's own figures, they will also admit that it is increasingly busy. And it is the lifeblood of this particular county, although only a relatively small amount goes through Lincolnshire. As well as the bigger ask, I think one of the things we need to be doing is putting together a comprehensive business case and feasibility study, working with other local stakeholders such as other county councils, such as Nottinghamshire and to a degree Leicestershire and Rutland, and saying, this is what's happening, this is the impact it's having on our community. Because you're right to highlight accidents, and it's shocking the amount of, the loss of life that's now occurring on that road, but we mustn't lose sight of the fact that the government's asking for investment, for growth, it requires a certain amount of infrastructure, but also the impact it has on, you know, where I live, where you live, where others in the area, when the road is closed. That area of Lincolnshire and kind of Rutland and Nottinghamshire just grinds to a halt. Grantham and Newark, these places just cannot cope with all that traffic suddenly dropping off the A1, so aside from the loss of life, it's a problem. So, the plan would be, over the next few months, is to draw that business case together so we have a very strong voice, working with Midlands Connect and Transport for these Midlands, to have one approach that hopefully government will listen to. And it comes back to the previous question in terms of MP support, you know, we need MPs who are prepared to kind of shout out on these issues.
Thank you very much. Next question is from councillor Robert Parker to councillor Martin Hill, OBE.
Morning, Martin. It's about the peer review and the report that's just been published, and you kindly circulated to all of us. You referred to some of the issues that were raised by the corporate peer review team. We're going to be tackled under the One Council Corporate Plan approach, and that's good, we look forward to that happening, but there are a couple of things that are outside of that remit. Just want to refer to page seven of the corporate review report, which talked about scrutiny, and scrutiny being weakened by a belief that the executive will do what it wants anyway. That's one of the points it's made. The second point is to do with the allocation of cabinet portfolios, and the noting that a huge proportion of the council's budget is held in a single cabinet portfolio, and he goes on to talk about, and the current work that we're doing may lead to a more distributed approach to cabinet financial accountability. The third point was about the way that we deal with our communities, and there's some quotes here that talk about the county council being a bit of a faceless institution at the moment. I don't think it's transparent or engaging as it could be, and the council doesn't really do customer engagement. Now, there are three things that are, in a sense, outside of the corporate review. Firstly, to do with the question of scrutiny and executive, secondly, to do with the distribution of portfolios, and then this question of how we go about our business. I wondered if you'd like to offer some comments on each of them, please.
Thank you. I'll start with, yes, I mean, as the peer review was circulated, and it was a very positive report for the council, and indeed, in the informal feedback we got before they left, it was quite clear that services are... it was quite clear that services are actually good across the piece in Lincolnshire, which is quite unusual for a council of our size. And in particular, they did note the excellent work which has been done in children's services in particular and also adults, improvements in adults and public health. So I think in the main, it was a very positive report, but of course, it would be very surprising if there weren't some comments, some issues to address, some of which you have mentioned and some of which frankly, we were quite pleased to see because it probably was a feeling that in our own self-assessment, there are some areas that could need improvement. In terms of scrutiny, I think there were some comments about scrutiny, I think there was a comment, well, which I don't necessarily agree with, they couldn't find examples where they thought scrutiny had actually changed anything. Well, I think that's actually wrong and actually, there's the formal procedure, there's also the informal procedure and indeed, the next paper, the first paper we're going to talk about today is the Corporate Plan, the executive actually has changed quite a bit of the corporate plan following the advice of the scrutiny. So I think, as we all know, that executive members or support councillors, executive support councillors attend scrutiny meetings and often are able to take in feedback but also collectively then decide together how the, whatever issue is being discussed is taken to account. And for example, we've got another example next week where scrutiny committee at Highways have gone against the recommendations and are suggesting now that a particular road in Spalding will now not, we won't do our eleven houses, it will cost us two million pounds more. I can't, I'm not going to prejudge what the executives say, but I'd be very surprised if the executive actually went against the unanimous advice of all those councillors. So I think there is always this view that, oh yes, they will do anything anyway. I think there is evidence to show that that is not the case. We do take what scrutiny says very seriously and we will continue to do so and I can think of several examples where things have changed. I think to fire it back a little bit, there is probably a need for scrutiny itself to be a bit more consistently good across the board and make sure that when they, people do take a lot of interest in the scrutiny that they have been requested to do. So yeah, I think we all agree that scrutiny could improve the council, it's not broken but it certainly could be a lot better and people may say that we take no notice now with a few, that entirely. In terms of cabinet portfolios, yes, it is correct that quite a proportion of the council's budget is under one portfolio, which is the lady sitting to my left hand side. All I would say is, yes, I think that is noted and as we move forward in the future, I think that will need to be addressed, but actually what you, the point of that comment is that, is anything broken now? So children's under her leadership is now outstanding, one of the best in the country, adults has actually improved out of all recognition and indeed, public health has made good steps in future, in recent times to actually become more embedded in the council. So it is a successful record, but obviously it is right that as we move forward, we look at the balance of where responsibilities lie. So I'm just waiting for some of my colleagues on the executive to volunteer for adult social care. I'll have to say, there hasn't been a stampede at the moment, but one can but hope. So it is working well, but I think it is a valid point, but it is a problem of success, not a failure. And the final point was the commitment to, sorry, can you just remind her of?
Customer engagement.
Yes, and I think that is very, I would support that. I think although we all know that a lot of work is done by the council, I think our, in terms of how we engage with communities and we work with communities and actually inform communities, we sometimes, although we do the right thing, we're not so good at telling them we've done it or advising them what they want to do. So there are several things going on at the moment. First of all, under councillor Woolley, the community engagement team are going to totally revamp how they do their business and for example, now there'll be newsletters which will go to all the parish councils and communities in Lincolnshire, just to inform them what's going on, but also create that link so that they feel that the county council is engaged. I think in the past, we've probably taken a backseat a little bit, relying on the district and the city council to do stuff jointly with us, but I think this benefit of that is sometimes we don't get credit for what we are informing people. So I think that was a valid point. In addition, we are about to launch our new website and indeed, when we get the new improvements in IT, that will again enable us to move forward in terms of the new digital agenda so we can use technology now to help people, for example, having bots, where that can help people actually navigate the county council. So I think it was a good report, there were some issues that we need resolving, they will be resolved and I think a lot of other councils will be very jealous of the report that we received from the peer review.
Thank you very much. The next question is from councillor Paul Key to councillor Richard Davis.
Short one this morning. Can you confirm that section 106 and SIL money have been going to fund the eastern bypass?
We certainly have a member of understanding in place with all the local authorities who are responsible for collecting that money on our behalf. I'm not aware at this moment whether we've physically received the monies yet, but I will get an answer and come back to you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Cleo Perriton-Williams to Patricia Bradwell, councillor Patricia Bradwell OBE.
Councillor Bradwell, I have been contacted by a constituent about her son walking to school. I have been out to visit the site and it is a sixty mile an hour road without a footpath for part of the journey. I understand that our policy states that in the specific example, this is okay. I'm asking that you review the policy as I do not believe it is safe, I would not want to walk it, so I do not expect us to allow a child to do this.
Thank you for the question. The, I have to say, I have a rural area and I agree with some of the issues you've raised there, but however, the council does have a duty to assess walking routes to schools where concerns of this nature are raised and we actually do work to national guidelines that are issued by the Road Safety of Great Britain. And we use these to assess routes in Lincolnshire like many other rural local authorities and obviously we adopt their guidelines to ensure consistent consistency in assessments that are completed across the county. The guidelines ask officers to actually consider the interaction between pedestrians and traffic and this includes assessing the volume and speeds of traffic and the ability of drivers and pedestrians to see one another clearly. If a route is found to be unsuitable against this criteria, the obviously the council will not put the necessary, they will put the necessary transport provisions in place. However, when a route is deemed suitable, as the one just described against the guidelines, the responsibility does lie with the father to actually decide whether a young person should walk that route or whether the parents should walk with them or get them to school, to pick up the school bus. Because in the main, when we live in rural areas, it will be about you going up the road, a rural road, to pick up the bus then to go on to school. So, you know, when we write to parents and say, this route's suitable, we do say that actually the responsibility does lie with the parents because actually, parents are responsible for their children until they actually get on the school transport. So that's whether it's a taxi or a school bus. It's only when they're on that bus that, you know, children are then in the care of the transport service and the local authority. So I think, you know, this is a very difficult one, we're a very, very rural county, but what I would say is that we did, it's less than three years since we did review this policy and it did go to scrutiny and there were no changes asked or suggested. But what I will say is to Cleo is that we, I'm happy to review it next year. Obviously, it's a big task, we've got probably more rural roads than we have A roads, B roads, but happy to review it again and look at the policy and then obviously, we see what comes out of it then. So I hope that, I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. The next question is from councillor Julie Killie to councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. At a local residents meeting recently, the community police officer reported thirty-eight incidents where cars have been broken into over a three month period and the area is not lit and I just would like some assurance of that area, which I will maybe speak to you later about, Richard, could be reviewed because there is quite a lot of concern about the incidence of crime in that area and I think it is linked to no street lighting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. The broad specifics of the policy are that where there are particular issues raised by the law enforcement authorities with regards to crime, then absolutely, we retain the ability to do that if it's required, but more generally across the county, Lincolnshire Police have been very clear that they have seen no increase in crime as a result of the policy. However, that doesn't mean we won't look at that area and we're very happy to do so, Julie. No problem.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Rob Kendrick to councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm aware that councillor Davy's already answered questions on flooding. Obviously, it's a concern in my division where we had a major breach at Timberland Delph. We currently have a section nineteen investigation in Scottwick and Digby's had flooding. In view of his previous remarks, does he have anything else to add to his statement on flooding issues? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kendrick, it's an opportunity to add a couple of further thoughts. Obviously, in relation to Digby, we have a major scheme already announced that will start on site in January, so that will hopefully help alleviate people's issues there. Most of the incidents of major flooding have happened, as I said earlier, on EA maintainable river banks which have breached. So obviously, we need to work closely with the EA and with all our partners going forward. And we have about a hundred and thirty section nineteen investigations currently underway. That is either one property or multiple properties that are being flooded. There's, that's a lot of extra work for our officers and that's a lot of extra resource and cost. Obviously, the Executive Council for Resources has strongly supported monies into the budget in previous years around this issue and I look forward to further conversations about going forward. It's quite clear, more resource is going to be needed to manage the implications of these intense rainfall events and we're already hearing, for instance, that the drainage boards alone, they've been pumping water, the electricity costs are now at hundreds of thousands of pounds over budget and that will have an impact on the way districts work with drainage boards in terms of drainage collection. So these are things we're going to need to be mindful of, we're going to have to all work together to make sure that we are as vigilant as we can be, that the assets are maintained as well as they can be by the responsible bodies and that we keep working together and finding resource wherever it needs to come from to make sure more schemes can happen in the county.
Thank you for your reply councillor Davy. Next on the list is councillor Sarah Parkin for councillor Patricia Bradwell OBE.
Councillor Bradwell, would you be able to give us an update on the industrial action from the health visitors, please? Just so that the chambers are aware of what the latest developments are. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, I think it was last week, end of last week, Unite put out a press release which we weren't aware that they were going to put out, they haven't let us know, but yes, we think probably after the election that things might move forward. They said that, Unite were saying that they'd put forward an agreement that, but actually that agreement was what the council have been putting forward on the table since the summer. So hopefully, we will be able to move forward and the health visitors, as I say, can get on with doing their work over the, after Christmas or whenever. But it's the same as has been before that we've got two grades, grades nine and ten, as you know, Unite wanted one grade, we've still got the two, but people who want to move up to grade ten will go through a professional, I think it's development, to prove that they can do the work of a grade ten and then they will be uplifted onto that grade. A number of health visitors have already done that and there are a small number at the moment who haven't done that. So all in all, I think health visitors like working here, but we've had this issue which hasn't helped things much at all, which I think has been driven, you know, by Unite. So hopefully, everything will be okay and we're hoping that they will, whatever they have to do, I don't know whether they have to sign something, or the dispute will be over, Unite will say it's over after the general election.
Thank you. And the last question I have on my list is from councillor Richard Buttroyd for councillor Martin Hill OBE.
Thank you, Chairman. Once the general election is over and the gridlock in Parliament has ceased and we have a working majority and a new MP in Lincoln, Karl McCartney, do we, do we have, Martin, do we have an update on where we will look to get fairer funding? It's been a real topic today, I think, and we'd add, and I'm sure everyone here would like an update and the plan for working with government going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, obviously, our fair funding campaign has been partially successful, partially very successful in the fact that it has highlighted the disparity and unfairness of the funding formula, which obviously we have debated in the past and the council has supported. I think it's, like many other matters, has got tangled in the weeds of Brexit and as we know, the Parliament has been semi-paralysed for the last nearly three years in all sorts of matters, in particular addressing the Brexit issue. And obviously, we are aware that the partial success has been that the government earlier this year announced a formula which was, if it was enacted in its entirety, would actually be very satisfactory for this council and other similar councils in the same vein. So there was an indication then that that would happen. Obviously, there have been some changes of personnel and there's been some changes in funding support and at the moment, although there was a further review promised, which was promised for the summer, we are still waiting for that further review and which was actually getting into the detail and actually the waiting of all the different formulae and that is going to be quite critical. So obviously, that is now waiting for the general election and hopefully, we'll get a government with a majority which can actually start doing stuff. I've been very happy with the support I've received from MPs across the county, very disappointed though that the MP for Lincoln has chosen not to support that campaign and I just hope that whoever is successful tomorrow, as in any of the constituencies in Lincolnshire, will actually commit to supporting our campaign because there's a lot of work to be done in terms of after the election to make sure that the, not only more money comes into local government, and I think all the main parties are promising that, but we still need to address this unfairness in the formula because otherwise, it can't be right if lots more money comes into local government that, in London gets twice as much extra support as Lincolnshire would. So it's an ongoing issue and we will, I think, need to return to it with vigour in the new year when further suggestions take place from government.
Thank you. That completes item five, which is questioned to the chairman of the leader of the executive council, chairman of committees and subcommittees. We now go on to item six, which is the Lincolnshire County Council Corporate Plan 2020/2030. Report by the leader of the council has been circulated, is a remover and second up.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to move this paper. As members are aware, at the last council meeting, we actually agreed the general principles and strategy for our new corporate plan, which was due for refreshments anyway from next year onwards. And at that, we agreed the broad principle of supporting high aspiration, enabling everyone to enjoy life to the full, creating thriving environments and provide good value of services. That was actually agreed at the last council. The last council also agreed that then there would be a period of consultation, both within and without the council. And I'm grateful to scrutiny colleagues in Ovie and scrutiny in particular, who have actually created a working group who went into this in some detail and I know the working group put a lot of work in to actually get the changes. I think there was some disappointment, to be frank, with the working group, that sometimes they felt that some of the changes weren't receiving a sort of a warm reception, shall I say, and the changes weren't being enacted as they would like. But it ended well, Ovie and scrutiny-
But it ended well, the OBE and scrutiny met last week, and they had a long debate about it and went through those recommendations from within the council, but also all the comments and suggestions which came from elsewhere, and there were quite a lot of those. The vast majority of those were very supportive, and there were some changes. They had a good debate at the council, at OBE and scrutiny, which then went to the executive, who again are recommending that this corporate plan is now agreed to today. And the following, if we agree that today, then the actual delivery of the corporate plan will be through the directorate plans, where the details will be worked out. On your desk, you've had a, then this is a draft, it says draft on it, and it's not what the final version would look like. Most of it will be online, of course, but then this is just a version which has been done with sort of cheaper, a cheaper version, just to give members the idea of what it looked like. If we agree this, then there will be those few hard copies which are done, and actually the online versions will be then done in this sort of style. So there was a good debate, and I think everybody's in agreement that we move forward with this corporate plan, and I welcome any further comments this morning.
Thank you very much. Just to remind the council, one approves the document attached as appendix C to report as the Lincolnshire County Council Corporate Plan 2020-2030 to take effect as part of the council's policy framework from the first of April 2020. And two approves the continued reporting against existing measures in the current council business plan in the next financial year beginning the first of April 2020. Do I have a second up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to second the corporate plan. I actually think it's very easy to read and understand, which I think is good, and actually it does set out our challenges and our aspirations for this county, which I think is very important. And we have spoken today about actually being a little bit distant from our communities and actually as local member, I mean, I think I'm not like that, because actually, you know, I do go into my communities. But I think actually council services can feel a little bit removed from communities, and I think that's what we realise when we're going to address that. For me, you know, it is about, there's mention about skills, about the workforce, and that, and those are really important things for us, forbidden business. We need to make sure that, you know, our businesses have the right people who can go in there and work for them and, you know, get a career in whatever they want to do. And also, we talk about thriving environments, and today we've heard about the problems we've got now with flooding, and as councillor Davie said, that might continue over the next few years. So, you know, it's a document that I think does embrace what the county is about, and actually it sets out, you know, some real bold aspirations that we've got for the county. So I have pleasure in seconding this report.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers on this subject? Councillor Parker.
Three points that I want to make. The first one is as leader of the Labour Group, and I make the statement in the context of the background to the corporate plan that we're looking at. You'll see from page twelve of the PAC that we had a discussion about this at our last meeting, the last full council meeting, and there were certain things that the Labour Party, Labour Group here, wanted to see included in the corporate plan. We talked about a great place to live, we wanted that emphasising within the report. We talked about enhancing quality of life, and in particular dealing with issues like social mobility and social exclusion. Talked about the environment and about resident satisfaction. Now, we put amendments to the last meeting, and they were rejected. So in a sense, there is part of our view that we can support what's in the corporate plan up to a point, but are saddened by the absence of these clear important issues to us. So that's the reason the Labour Group's going to abstain. But being positive about the report, as Chair of the OBE and scrutiny management board, I was involved in both the working group and the decision of the OSNV, and we did analyse what had been brought to us, we made recommendations, and I can say from my point of view as Chair of the OSNV, but maybe not as leader of the Labour Group, that within the context of what we were given, I think we've made some clear and distinct improvements. I think that, I'd like to thank everybody that was on the working group and also on OBE and scrutiny management board, because we think that we have improved, enhanced some of the points that we wanted to see, we as being the OBE and scrutiny management board. And that's particularly around the environment, about reflecting what this document that we've got, the colour document, what it shows in terms of the attributes of different parts of Lincolnshire and the different people. So here we have a corporate plan to go forward, but like everything else, where we start with a plan, the real outcome is going to be in the implementation and delivery of it, because I'm sure that plenty of councils in the past and I'm sure in the future will have a corporate plan that is there as a document rather than something that's living. So I think that our challenge is to live this document, even though in our view it's not complete in the sense of social inclusion and social mobility, but it is something that officers and councillors can take forward, but the spirit of it has to live on, and particularly in the way that we engage with our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for that. The next speaker is councillor Sarah Parkin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just following what Rob said, I think when I opened the document, I did feel a sentence called, I feel the section entitled our vision, welcome to the corporate plan, which sets out what we want to achieve for local residents and communities. And then the next page, our strengths and challenges, the local community sector is under a precedent of pressure. You can't actually knock any of that for being inaccurate, it is accurate, but for me, what it doesn't do is really celebrate this county. I would have loved that first sentence on either of those pages or both of them or all of them to actually be really celebrating this place that we live, this county of Lincolnshire. I am really proud of our place and I'm proud of our people, and I don't get the enthusiasm for where we are from this document, and if it could be revised, I would like it revised in that way. Our first bullet point from the last council meeting, the amendments that we would have to make, where we recognise that Lincolnshire is a great place to live, we want Lincolnshire to be a great place for everyone of all ages and backgrounds to be able to live life to the full in safe and supportive communities. And I repeat that to reiterate that this, I don't want to see this corporate plan being built on a deficit model. And that first paragraph and that first section, our strengths and challenges, is actually pointing at deficits as opposed to strengths, it's pointing to the problems, the deficits that we have in terms of government funding, instead of celebrating the strengths that we have inherent in the other county in terms of our place and our people. So I'll just leave that comment out there and wait to see if anyone can revise them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Parkin. The next councillor I have is councillor Jackie Brockway.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I have to say, I have a bit of news here, that Labour wouldn't support this highly because this went to OBE and scrutiny management twice, it was discussed extensively, we held a very robust working party, of which councillor Parker was present and took a full part. In addition to that, there was an extensive correspondence between councillor Parker and myself and the committee there, and a meeting between councillor Parker and myself to address mostly my concerns, and those concerns were all addressed and changed, and I don't have anywhere in this correspondence or in records of these meetings that you still have outstanding concerns that weren't addressed. I've got the entire correspondence here, and there's nothing. And I would just say, if there were concerns, it was a full cross-party discussion, debate, robust, the whole thing is here, and I'm actually very disappointed that after that entire extended process, you should come to this council and say that there are things that were left out that you wanted in. Having been there with you through this whole thing, I don't know what those things are. So I would say there seems to be a miscommunication here, and we need to address it, because you had as much influence in this as the rest of us, and all the concerns were listened to. I'm absolutely totally gotten out that those comments have been made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I make a personal statement?
Carry on, councillor Parker.
I thought councillor Brockway had made it very, very clear. I have two roles on this council, one is leader of the Labour Group, and two is leader of the, sorry, Chair of the OBE and scrutiny management board. I moved a motion at the last council meeting, talking about a great place to live, et cetera. That wasn't accepted, okay? Spirit of democracy, I accepted that. There was no point in me being as Chair of the OBE and scrutiny management board, reopening a debate which had already been agreed, settled and done. How, I don't know what sort of credibility you'd think I would have as Chair of the OBE and scrutiny management board, if after having my recommendation defeated, I carried on, continued to try to press through something that the council had already disagreed with. Once that became the de facto proposal that was going forward, which it was at the last full council, then I was left with that to own, and that's what I did as Chair of the OBE and scrutiny management board. I can't think that's a better way of separating out two different responsibilities, and I'm sorry you couldn't understand that during the time we were speaking.
Point of information, Chairman.
Carry on.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much, but I think it is important also.
You need, excuse me, councillor, but you need to press your button, so we...
Which one? The big one, sorry, I apologise, Chairman. I think it is important to remember that in fact you were very much listened to, and if you read the corporate plan in detail, which I have, you will see how it says, very much having listened to you, saying shouting loud and proud for Lincolnshire and other comments along those lines, so I'm afraid I do hold my point.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is councillor Marian Overton, MBE.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm pleased to see a lot in this document, it's clearly a lot of good stuff, and I appreciate that a lot of good work has gone on, so thank you very much to all of you for that. I'm not on the management scrutiny committee, so I haven't been involved in that, where there have been opportunities, I've responded. The issue I want to pick up, though, is the point about the environment, which does have a whole section here. We've talked about the flooding that's going on, and we are expecting more flooding. Somebody said for the next few years. I don't know how, why you think it would suddenly stop. What we are seeing, as we've said before, is that we are in a situation where, yes, there've been natural fluctuations in the climate, but we've gone off the scale. If you look at the graph of carbon, it goes like this, and then it goes exponentially of carbon dioxide in the air. We're just not in the same place where we were before. We have to tackle this problem, and what I would like to see is something in here that demonstrates that we are tackling it. When I raised this issue in this council, you did say that you were already doing it, and I took some comfort from that, but I can't see it in here. So I would really like something in here that goes towards recognising that we need to do something about reducing our emissions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. Our next speaker is councillor Chris Brewis.
Thanks, Chairman. I think mine was fairly brief. I'm very pleased after the last council meeting, this was slightly altered to take account of things that people had been, and I think it's a good move forward. I do rather share the concern, which will come up under item eight about climate change. We've heard this week how, if we give Greenland as an example, ice melting far faster than it ever has. If the ice were to melt on Greenland, sea level would rise twenty-two feet around the planet, and Lincolnshire is more uniquely, not uniquely, but probably more adversely affected by these issues than anywhere else. As to how long we've got, we should see, but not very long. It's possibly five years before we reach the tipping point.
Thank you. I have no other speakers. Oh, I beg your pardon, we have, we have two. We'll take the lady first. Yes, there's no...
Just a quick one, following on from what councillor Overton and councillor Brewis have said, I would really have liked the word climate emergency to have been used in the document instead of just mentioning climate change, just to show our council's commitment to that. And I know we're looking at a green master plan in 2020, maybe the public should know that we're doing that to show our commitment, that's what I would have liked to have seen in there. I think quite a few organisations, such as the GLEP, did mention, you know, that they wanted more emphasis on the climate side of things in the document, so that's my comment. That left out at me when I read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexander Moore, you're next.
Thank you, Chairman. I just thought I'd bring to the attention of councillor Overton, page eleven of the corporate plan, where she'll see it says that we will look after our places in a sustainable way, all communities benefiting from clean economic and social growth, deliver clean growth in the right place and at the right time, and it mentions a hundred and six million pounds investment since 2016 in flood risk management across the county. So I hope that clarifies.
Clarification, Chairman. I accept that, and I did read that, and I saw that. What it doesn't say anything about is reducing the carbon dioxide emissions, nor in fact resilience, you know, if we're talking about planting trees or anything like that, that's nothing there either. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Councillor Ray Wooton.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. I sit on the committee as vice-chairman. We've had several working groups looking at this document, we've gone through it page by page, both myself and councillor Jackie Brockway made suggestions which were changed, which we really appreciate, and therefore I would recommend that council accept this document in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Then we will go to the vote.
Chairman, I'd just like to respond.
Please. Councillor Hill.
Well, thank you for those comments. I would say, though, I'm a little bit disappointed that people are at this late stage, and there's been a long consultation period where members in particular have been given every opportunity to give some input into it, although I welcome their comments, I do find it a little bit disappointing they are suddenly expecting late changes at this stage. I think what the problem, I think, and some of the comments have been made, is all about a misunderstanding, well, what sort of corporate plan do we want to have? And I think I take out the Parker's point, we've got to make it a living corporate plan as opposed to something which has, and I'm afraid you, looking around the corporate plans at other councils and organisations, you can have a corporate plan which has every single thing in it you can think of, you know, everything anybody possible wants, you will put it all in the corporate plan, it'll be a massive document, full of words going on, thousands and thousands of words, it goes on the shelf and it's forgotten about forever. I think what we're trying to do here is have a corporate plan which is simple, we've got the four themes, and actually just is a simple message that people, A, people out in the county and elsewhere can relate to, can understand, and again, because it's a simple document, that means that it, that actually is more chance, that actually we will actually change the way we do things accordingly. So I make no apology, and one of the problems is, I'm sure people can stand up, this word's not in there, climate emergency will not be in there, councillor, I forget who raised that, because we had the debate about council emergency, and we, we didn't, the council didn't agree to that. Interestingly, the corporate peer review team came, and they were vouched on to this issue, but once they saw our carbon management plan and all the work we are doing, their only comment was, well, you're doing such good work, why don't you make more noise about it? We have been very successful in this council, actually reducing, as opposed to other councils which spout on about climate emergency, but when you look to actually what they're doing, it amounts to not a lot. Whereas this council, all the way back since 2008 it was, I can't remember the date, we have been very, very successful in playing our part in doing that practically, we had that debate. So I think also the same would apply to councillor Parkin's comments. I think, yes, I mean, the theme behind this, we want to be positive about our county, and when the executive initially met to talk about that, and with the, with the management, the senior management team, we were very clear that that's what it was all about. And I would have thought on the first, the page four, although we've got to accept the climate, the financial climate we're in at the moment, there is a lot of positives there... climate, the financial climate area at the moment, there is a lot of positives there. And I think one of the things I want to do as part of this corporate plan, that the executive wants to do, is make sure councillor Parkin, yes, you are right, we need to shout about the benefits and the great place we are very privileged to represent. So I hope that with that, members will, will actually support this, even though the particular words they might want in there aren't there, because we've just tried to win overarching living document.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hill, and I'm sorry for not coming back to you. Can we now vote those in favour of item six? Those against? Any abstentions? That is clearly carried. And we move on to item seven. And Debbie Barnes has decided to leave on this item, because it's the appointment of Chief Executive. Report by the chairman of the Appointments Committee has been circulated. Is there a remover and seconder?
Yes, thank you, chairman. I hope she's coming back sometime soon.
She might well come back.
Well, she might not, if we, if we don't agree the appointment. Obviously, we agreed that, as previously stated, that it was all the intention towards the end, about this time of the year, that we would address the situation of appointment of Chief Executive. So the Appointments Committee met and agreed that that would, we, we would actually appoint a Chief Executive. The adverts went out, and I think we had 22 applications who came in. They were whittled down to three shortlisted ones, which were interviewed last week. And it was quite clear that unanimously the committee agreed that Debbie Barnes was the outstanding candidate, and were very happy to recommend her appointments today. So I can only say that I'm very supportive of it, and I hope that the council will then agree that she should become our Chief Executive.
Thank you very much. Do we have a seconder?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Being part of that appointments panel gives me great pleasure to second the motion.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any speakers? No. So councillor Parker, sorry, I missed you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was a part, like Angela Newton and Martin Hill, of the appointments panel. It was, as Martin said, unanimous, and we all look forward to working with the new Chief Executive, Debbie, for the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can we now vote those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? So that is clearly carried. Would you be kind enough to invite Mrs Debbie Barnes? I think that response clearly shows how popular Debbie is, and we welcome you to the team as Chief Executive. And I understand that you're carrying on the role, that you head a debate service at the moment. Yes. Right. We move on to item eight, which is the climate change update report by the executive council of Commercial and Environmental Management has been circulated. Is there a remover and seconder?
Thank you, chairman. It's given me pleasure to remove this report. I don't think I have anything further to add at this stage, although I will reserve my right to speak at some point if somebody wished to debate it.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder?
Thanks, chairman. I'm very happy to second, and I'm going to reserve my right to speak, so if there's a debate, I can take part.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Davy. Are there any speakers on this? Councillor Brewis.
Thank you very much, chairman. Very briefly, as you know, this is something very dear to my heart. I'm so pleased to see item three, where we'll, and, and further on, and throughout it, where we're going to review this very urgently. It is an enormous crisis we're facing, and I for one thoroughly, thoroughly welcome this, and the urgency is with us now. I've studied this since I was 10, and the reason I got interested in climate, because nobody else at school knew anything about it, and I became the only person, I knew very, very little, but I knew more than anybody else, which is why I got interested in it. I've studied it since then. And what I'm really saying is, I welcome this, and I welcome the fact we have to look at it extremely regularly. And we ain't got very long, I can tell you.
Thank you very much, councillor Brewis. Councillor Parker, I think you were next.
Two points to make to councillor Poll. The first one relates to page 68. And it's not meant to be a trick question. Essentially, we had a debate, didn't we, in May, when the Labour Group brought a motion forward? And this paper that we've got before is the consequence of it. But at page 68, paragraph six, what we're supposed to be getting today is an action plan. Because that was what was agreed at that, that particular meeting back in May. And just to read it, that it says, we should receive an update at the December 2019 full council meeting. Details of actions taken, good, and with an action plan, including annual reviews for the 10-year period from 2020 to 2030. We don't have that action plan, and I understand from officers that, that that isn't going to be the case until councils agreed something. But I just wondered if you could explain the cycle that we go through in order to bring us to an action plan, which was agreed back in May, that we should have today.
Councillor Hill.
I can just shed some light on that matter. Obviously, because we are in a perdu period, obviously took advice from our, our legal, legal employees. And the view was that it was, it is an awkward subject, because obviously there's election tomorrow. So the view was, the, the council had agreed that a paper would come to this meeting, but because we're in perdu, and maybe some of the discussion might be, might be politically controversial, the view was that it should be an overarching document, and we wouldn't go quite into the full detail which councillor Park was referring to.
Thank you for that clarification. Councillor Sarah Parkin.
Thank you, chairman. It was an interesting read, and obviously this is kind of like the, our starting gun, so to speak, of this process. I think, obviously, we're talking at very high level, document very strategic at the moment. And I think what will be really interesting is for, for us to monitor and for us to see the follow-through of this, of this vision that we have. I don't want this to be merely a strategic ambition that is happening, happening outside of us. I think all of us as council members have to seize this, have to work with it, have to really grasp it, both as council members, but as also, as also as role models in our community, of what not just sustainable, of what the entire sustainable lifestyle might look like. I'm really interested to see what the department, departmental targets are going to look like, what the role of individual scrutiny committees is going to be as we move forward in terms of monitoring the progress from, within, within each department area. Because we're all in this. This is, this isn't just something that is going to happen at a high, high level. All of us as members must be fundamentally involved in this. I'm interested in our role as an influencer. We have done some really ambitious work in children's services in terms of coordinating efforts with our special schools, in a way that I think seemed ambitious nationally, it seemed almost impossible nationally. But we have brought those fairly desperate academy providers together to have a holistic view. Now, that not only will have an environment, really positive environmental impact in terms of children not travelling across the country for such vast distances, but it does show that we have great power within us to be an influencer for change. Can we use the existing forms? Can we use the schools forum to really get to grips with how schools can move forward the environmental and the green agenda? What can we do? Let's, let's really open our vision to not just what we need to do, but how we can influence others. Can we, can we manage to use that channel, for example, to bring forward action on school parking? That not only brings immediate highways wins, but massive environmental benefits to our communities as well. And I think it's that synergy that is really, really exciting, potentially, as we move forward. We're talking all the time at the moment about public health initiatives, about highways initiatives, and so many of these, these environmental factors not only impact on our environment, but influence our communities and also public health for good. So we'd really ask as individual members, as a council, to really seize this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parkin. Councillor Austin, you are next.
Thank you, chairman. Some of what I'm going to say rather echoes councillor Parkin. When we had the council, the debate about climate change a few months ago, I remember using the word, we must be careful as a council not to pay lip service. And then about 10 days later, we had a scrutiny meeting, E and E scrutiny, where we were asked to approve the, the executive's decision on the type of fuel they were going to purchase. I like to think that we, as a committee, said we want it to be the green option, which wasn't actually financially the cheapest. And I believe that the executive took that on board. So that was one thing, I think, that we can tick as an achievement. Right, now then. The second point is, strategy needs actions, and we've got to have those actions, and those actions have to be carried out. But also, and again, what councillor Parkin has just said, it's corporate, it's a corporate plan, but it's up to every one of us as individuals to do the best we can in our own lifestyles. I think the younger generation perhaps are more in tune, as our young Swedish example perhaps shows. But the work that Doug Robinson did with schools, that really did help inspire youngsters. And they possibly are the ones that are picking up the baton. I regret to say, it's probably maybe my generation, or maybe the slightly below my generation. But, you know, we have to convince everybody, and we set an example. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no other speakers from the, yes, I have, councillor Eddie Strangle.
Thank you, chairman. I wasn't going to comment, but I'd like to support the leaders' comments about the fact that we are doing better than a lot of other counties around the, the United Kingdom. And I think we are doing that. As chairman of the Pensions Committee, I'd just like to add, chairman, that R I, which is Responsible Investment, and E S G, Environmental, Social and Governance, is very much on the top of our agenda in Border to Coast, which is, of course, we are one of the 12 partners in Border to Coast, which looks after the employees' pension funds. I will say that the environmental side of it, we are taking very, very seriously, and we're doing everything we can, that all the investments for people's pensions, people that are working for the councils and public services, are being looked at very responsibly. And I think we are doing quite a lot, if not the utmost, to actually make sure that we are investing responsibly. And that is part of the thing that we are doing to support the environment. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. I have two other speakers at the moment. Councillor Marian Overton, MBE.
Thank you very much. Apologies if I haven't got all the information, and I understand some isn't on here. But I've got the six projects proposed, and they do seem to be hitting important issues like transport, property, presumably insulation and so on, energy use, energy generation. I'm wondering if we should also have something about energy, about sequestration of, of carbon dioxide. So for example, I'm not saying planting trees is the answer to the universe, but should we not think about some other ways in which we can tackle the problem as well? And then the other thought is, it's good and important that we make a clear step in leadership ourselves about our own actions. But thinking earlier, we were talking about community engagement, and perhaps there's more that we can do so that we encourage the whole county to work together in the same direction. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. The final speaker I have on here is councillor Robin Renshaw.
Thank you, chairman. I was sitting here with trepidation, because the big guns are going to keep their powder dry. And I thought, well, I didn't say anything controversial. Anyhow, the, all the current evidence demonstrates quite clearly that procrastination on action is not, not, not satisfactory, not okay. And Lincolnshire, we have started on the process. But I think lagging behind is not, is not a choice. We haven't got time to, to, to dilly-dally. The, who's going to stop the ice from melting in Greenland? Who's going to stop the plastic poisoning of the fish? You know, these things are happening now. We have to take action. And, and one thing that we're all concerned about is leadership from government. Now, everybody knows about the school room, we talk about it. It causes this council thousands and thousands of pounds, not least of all, from monitoring the, the parking around schools. But nobody has weighed up the amount of carbon that, that is taken up from, from traffic taking children to school from one side of cities, and it's, it manifests itself, it's replicated over the whole United Kingdom. It must be a massive amount of carbon. And it's not just the carbon, it's about the pollution and, and the, the effect of pollution in, in terms of the health budget is phenomenal. And we, you know, it's a win-win if we do something about it now. So somebody raised also the cost of electricity for, for the IDBs, and that's another thing, generating electricity. We're not rolling out PV, electricity generation by, by PV cells for argument's sake. And there's still public buildings around that haven't got any PV arrays, and it's a no-brainer. Take notes in the air, and it's saving money. So I think it's a good paper, and we're on the journey, but we need to step up into top gear. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Renshaw. Unless there are any other speakers, I will go back. Yes, I know, I'm coming to you. Unless there are any other speakers, I will go to councillor Poll. First of all, councillor Davy.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, chairman, and very interesting comments from, from members across the council. Firstly, I want to say this, and I want to echo what councillor Hill said earlier. We should be really, really proud in this chamber, the fact that we've had leadership on this issue since 2008. And if you look at the report, 40% reduction in carbon. And that is a big number, because lots and lots of people around this country and other authorities haven't even got close to that. And it's true also to say that a number of our district colleagues are now working with us to help them, so we can help them understand their issues, because they need to play catch-up too. As I said at the previous debate on this issue, you know, all of us signed the Nottingham Declaration many years ago now. We actually came back here, and we started to take action. And we've done that consistently over, over the last decade. So we should all, no matter which side of the chair we're on, be proud that this council is doing something, we are showing leadership, but we should shout about it. And that was the point picked up in the peer review. So we should all go back into our own patches and tell people what we're doing. But councillor Brewis is absolutely right. We need to do more, and we need to be progressive about this. But we also need to do it on the basis of clear evidence and clear benefit. We've got to avoid the gesture politics that gets associated with this issue, and just focus on real action that makes a real difference. And that's down to every single one of us, whichever committees you're on, ask the question, how does this fit the agenda? What could we do to improve this proposal, that it actually meets the environmental tests we should set ourselves in the future? So it is for all of us individually as councillors, local leadership, leadership here in this chamber, and let's all work together to make sure that the action plan that comes forward is as strong- is as strong and robust as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Davie. We will now go to the vote on item eight. Those in favour? Those against? Are there any abstentions? Well, that is clearly carried, and we go on to item nine, which is the Members' Code of Conduct. A report by the chairman of the Audit Committee has been circulated. Is there a mover and seconder?
Mr Chairman, I would like to move the recommendations from the Audit Committee from the 18th of November as itemised. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the working group for all the deliberations and recommendations in looking at the seven principles, by the known principles in public life, which have been reflected on in this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second for this?
I'd like to second this, Mr Chairman. But first, may I just congratulate in public David Barlow on the report. Well done.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? No, amazing. So we will go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? No, that is clearly carried. And we move on to item 10, which is the Audit Committee Annual Report 2018-2019. A report by the chairman of the Audit Committee has been circulated. Is there a mover and seconder?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to move the report as itemised in the papers. And I reserve my opportunity to speak later.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder?
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to second the motion on behalf of Aaron Spencer, who is not here.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? Did I see a hand go up there, actually? No. Right, well then, we'll come back to councillors before this.
I just may take you off me just to say quite two words. Obviously, the report itself is quite self-explanatory. What we look to do in the committee is look at the issues that are presented without feel of favour. And I would thank all my committee members for all the input during the year, which again, has been very detailed and deliberations have been very well placed. So, and so those are all reflected in the AGS or the annual governance statements that was produced according to that process.
Thank you very much. Right, no speakers, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour of this item 10? Those against? Any abstentions? That is clearly carried. Thank you very much indeed. We now move on to item 11, which is the Members' Allowance Scheme. A report by the executive director responsible for democratic services being circulated. Councillor Hill.
This is the annual report about members allowances. Just to report, there are no proposed changes to the scheme ensuing here.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder at all?
Yeah, I'll pause a second and reserve my right to speak if anybody interrupts.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? No, right, we will go to the vote then, unless councillor Hill wants to say anything else. Do you councillor Parker? Right, we'll go to the vote then. Those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Right, well, that is clearly carried. So we move on to item 12, which is motions on notice submitted in accordance with the council constitution. Members are reminded of the rules of debate. These are set out on the back of the Order of Proceedings. And this is a motion by councillor Rob Parker.
Well, tomorrow's election day, I'm sure that we all realise that, because we'll probably be doing things in our towns in Lincolnshire County, and this motion essentially is a sort of request for manifesto statement by us, as Lincolnshire County councillors, to say what do we expect from the incoming government. I think it's timely, perfectly timely. And secondly, it also comes on the back of a report recently published by the Association of Public Sector Excellence, which found that, for example, the public are 11 times more likely to trust local councillors than they are on decisions from government ministers, 7 times more likely to trust councils on making decisions about local services, and 9 times more likely to trust local authorities to deliver on those services. So in a sense, local government matters, but also local government can be trusted. One point that was interesting was on devolution of powers from central to local government. The survey found that 81% of people wanted to see more money spent locally, with local decisions being taken. The priorities that were mentioned would come as no great surprise, will they? Social care, roads maintenance, okay. Climate change, 66% of those surveyed wanted more money allocated for local spending, and that was 3 times as many as wanting to see money continue to be spent nationally. So if the public can trust local government, then we need to be able to deliver on services that should be moved from central to local government. And there are seven parts to this request for the next government to listen to local government. And you could call them, in one sense, the magnificent seven. The first one starts out being about councils being able to raise enough money through a combination of council tax and business rates. So we recognise that some central government financial support is necessary, but that support should be sustainable and adequate. I think if we go back to, go to the second point in our proposal about fairer funding, I know this should be a shoe-in for us to agree on, because back in October 2017, councillor Hill met with Stadi Javid, when he was then Secretary of State for Communities and Local Government, and pressed a case for a fairer funding regime. Welcoming noises, but that was three years and, sorry, two years and two months ago, 26 months ago. So in a sense, we need a fairer funding formula that sorts out the issues that councillor Hill referred to earlier, about not just having more money coming out of any new government, but it being adequately distributed so that it reached local councils, like Shire Counties, Shire Districts. The next point that I wanted to make is about the whole question of allowing local councils to take decisions about the appropriate rate of council tax and business rate for that matter. The point being, the power to set taxes should be uninhibited. It seems quite wrong in the days of the relationship between central and local government that we should not have the ability to raise the amount of council tax, bearing in mind that we are responsible, local authorities are responsible, and therefore no longer is there the fear that was highlighted in the 1980s under a previous government about council taxes being raised beyond the level that is sustainable in a local community. I think it's fair to make the point that the current business rates model is flawed for a whole number of reasons, but two of them spring to mind immediately. The first one is the changing nature of the retail market. Online businesses fare much better under the business rates model than high-street providers. And we've seen the consequences across Lincolnshire of that. And as well, the shift of a large business that pays a large amount of business rates from a local area actually can have serious damaging implications for that council, the business tax base. And that could be for something outside completely of the local authority's control, because we live in a world, an interconnected world, where business will move wherever is necessary in order to bring about better trading conditions. The next point relates to adult social care. And again, I think we all appreciate, don't we? And we are looking to an incoming government not just to take urgent action, but to pay sustained attention to ensure a long-term policy is agreed so that people can know well in advance of what we might call retirement age and beyond, what is expected, what is going to be the relationship between firstly, the person and their family, secondly, the local authority that provides the services, and thirdly, central government. Until that happens, and it does seem a long way down the line, doesn't it? We need to recognise that there's an opportunity for the adult social care premium to be removed. And a substantial point is the need for the Better Care Fund, more details to be known, agreed by central government in consultation with local government about what is the future of the Better Care Fund. Because our local authority finances is predicated on continuation of the Better Care Fund, but we don't have that security. The final point I want to make is about prevention being much better than cure. And we must seek to influence government to give greater commitment and prioritisation and funding of preventative services. For example, public health and adult social care services are seriously, seriously important in preventing the pressures that tend to happen during different periods of the year on the health service and particularly on hospitals. And secondly, the work that we could as local authorities be doing with youth services, children's services, preventing policing being involved, is much better than pumping more money into policing at the end of the day. So hospitals get more money because it's popular, policing gets more money. But if local authority services of the preventative nature were in place, then possibly there would be a big reduction. It's for all those reasons that we are moving this motion in order to, if we get agreement, send a message from Lincolnshire to Whitehall that these are the sort of things that we want to see enhanced, sort of put into practice by whichever government is in place. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Parker. Do I have a seconder at all? Councillor Parker, could you please?
Thank you, chairman. It gives me all pleasure to second this motion today. I think we can all agree that whatever happens tomorrow, whatever we're watching on Friday, will be completely fascinating. But what we mustn't leave sight of in that wider political context is what our roles and what our responsibilities are in this chamber and for the people who we sit and represent here. I agree with those seven statements and those seven principles. I think they're relatively uncontroversial. I think they're very meaningful. But I think they're relatively uncontroversial in terms of what we're all trying to achieve here. And for me, this is about starting as you need to go on. In our relationship with the new government that will be formed on Friday, that we are going to make sure that our voice for Lincolnshire is strong and clear and going forward straight away to whoever is holding the reins of power. Central government, in the time that I've been here, have asked an awful lot from local government. They've asked an awful lot from us. And interestingly, from what councillor Parker is saying, the public are recognising that, and the public are recognising that in fact we've achieved. And I think on the back of that, we need to ask for things of return. And I think we are in a really strong position now to be able to make the case for more devolution, for more responsibilities, for more power on the back of what we've already achieved in Lincolnshire. If you look at the success of our children's services, for example, we can see there that despite the cuts, despite the pressure that we've been under, we've achieved, we've led. And really, for me, these seven statements is saying, give us more, give us more of that opportunity to lead and to take that initiative forward. I think it's time to address that with central government and to make that case from the outset. I also want to talk about public health. It's a long way from us, but if you look at the moment, what is happening in Samoa with the measles outbreak, young children, young babies dying daily from a completely preventable disease, that is the beauty of public health. And that, for me, is so important that we harness that. Not just those preventative services for public health, but also in our youth work, so that we are stopping these problems hitting. And I think that is the case, that we really need to take to central government really, really clearly that, yes, we can do the crisis management. Yes, we can look after our looked-after children brilliantly. But we need more to be able to stop those crises, whether it be health, whether it be antisocial behaviour, whether it be stopping smoking, whether it be exercise, whether it be obesity. We need more resources to be able to do more for our communities. And I think that is fundamentally what we're asking. Do more. We want to do more because there is a financial and also a moral imperative for us to do so.
Thank you. I have three speakers at the moment. Councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, chairman.
Sarah.
Away, away. Good, thank you. Could I congratulate councillor Parker on the way he's set out this motion in a very clear, concise manner, and actually does raise all the issues which we have been arguing about for some time. I think councillor Parker also raised the issue of local government councillors are far more respected by the public than our Member of Parliament colleagues. So perhaps today we can send them an example. All those 650 members of parliament who will be elected on Friday, mostly on Friday, there might be a few on tomorrow for the ones that go quickly. Because I think we will support this motion, because I can't really see there's any reason why we shouldn't, and it's a good motion. I think we are showing that we will live up to the promises we all made when we were elected, which I think local governments, local councils are far better at doing than they are in Parliament. I think we are good in this council that show respect to each other, recognizing the differences. But once we've had the debates, then in a mature way, accepting the democratic result and moving on so that we can work together for the benefit of all the people we represent. So we will be supporting this motion, because I think it's a good motion. And we look forward to working together to make sure these actions actually happen. As I discussed at the, as I'd said at the beginning of this debate, at the beginning of this council meeting, there are lots of agendas that need addressing when there is a new government, hopefully with a majority, which can actually then start moving forward and making decisions.
Thank you very much for that councillor Hill. Councillor Bruce, you are next.
Thank you, chairman. Very brief. One technical point. The second bullet point, the fifth word should be formulae, not formulae, because it's a singular, but we won't go into that. I support the principles in here. I only have one slight proviso. We all know that this fairer funding review has been pushed back again and again and again. One hopes whatever government is there actually addresses that. Because governments of all persuasions, we know only too well, have been all too ready to probably insist that the cities in London get better funding in case inebriated MPs trip over in the street and they want to be rescued very quickly. Could I be that cynical? But it seems to me they've assumed that rural Britain, counties, will cope. And of course, we do, don't we, just about? But it's reached a stage where we need that, the fairer funding, to be fit and actually addressed, in my opinion, certainly within the next 12 months. My only worry in here are the two bits where we say, "Take limits off", which might give government excuse to say, "Oh, let them wallop the tax up on deprived communities in rural areas", rather than addressing the iniquity of the present funding system. I don't know, Martin will probably put me right, how much a property it is in Lincolnshire. But we know it's well over £100 million. We've shortened something under £200 million. And that needs to be addressed so that we can actually do even better what we still do, in my opinion, exceptionally well on a budget. We probably ought to be rewarded by being told, my goodness me, because of the excellent example that's being set and managing on a tight budget, we're going to do what we did to Northern Ireland, give you £2 billion extra.
Thank you for that councillor Bruce. Councillor Mrs Overton, MBE.
Thank you very much. I also welcome this motion, and I think it is very carefully crafted, on something that we can all agree on, which I very much respect and appreciate. Firstly, I think it does point out the value of our local services. I'm not sure everybody understands that, that we pay our income tax into a central pot. And some of that money's been coming back for spend locally to run our local services. And it's that budget that has been reduced to 10%. And it's that budget that has been reduced to ten per cent, to ten per cent, huge reductions. Some of it has been shifted into limited life pots, where there is a control from central government, and that brings us down to a reduction of sixty-four per cent. But those are short-term pots, there's no long-term guarantee. We have a serious risk in the future of substantial reductions which would be extremely damaging and hard for us to manage, not ones that fairer funding would be able to resolve. I have had a look at the figures for fairer funding for different councils, and I don't think it's going to help us as much as we would like, because we can see that we are really short, and it must be perfectly obvious to everybody that we need more funding to run our basic services, but that isn't how it comes out. Other people also think they're very short. So I fear that that isn't the result. I'm certainly going to push for it, and we should be pushing for it, but it isn't going to solve the problem. What we actually need is the bigger problems, and these are in here, about the long-term funding for adult care, that's got to be resolved. And the other thing that worries me is the shift towards business rates, and we did accept that. We said, okay, let's not have a grant, let's have our business rates. That will give instead us an incentive to support our businesses. Okay, that sounds all right. Problem is, if governments come in and say, actually, we're not going to charge business rates anymore, so where will our funding come from then? So I have serious concerns about the future, and I think it's really important to put this right now. I'm actually not too sure about the majority. What I'd really like is a government that is listening, listening to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Mrs Everton. Councillor Eddie Paul, you are next.
Thank you, Chairman. Talk, this, 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 oh, work. This discussion about business rates, I have to say, way back in my youth, I used to live in the People's Republic of South Yorkshire, where all the businesses moved across to Rotherham because they didn't charge so much business rates, and that didn't really do a lot for the cheap bus fares we were paying for in South Yorkshire at the time. And I think you're absolutely right, the Danes were business rates, or reliant on business rates for local authority funding, is fine if you've got lots of businesses. And the idea that by charging them less may attract more doesn't necessarily work, does it? But anyway, what I really wanted to say was that I think it's a great motion. This business about the council taxes that cap is the bit that interests me, and we've had some discussions this morning around drainage authorities, in particular on climate change, and one of the big issues for them and for us as local authorities, although not at this level, is the fact that our internal drains board precepts are included within the cap for local authority council tax. Now, we've been trying for a long, long time to get government to change that because it really does affect everybody, and you can well imagine the situation this year, where all those internal drains boards within Boston and East Lindsay in particular have to put their precepts up by so much to pay for their electricity bills that actually Boston and East Lindsay couldn't raise any more council tax for themselves. That's an horrendous situation to be in, it's not one that works well, and I think if you were to include the removal of IDB precepts being taken out of the local authority cap, I think that'd be a really great thing to do.
Thank you for that. One other speaker I have at the moment, which is councillor Alison Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. I think, Eddie, can you mind read across the chamber? Yes. Flexibility to raise more income locally. We're, all right, I'm county councillor, but I'm also a borough councillor for Boston, and we've got a low tax base, and we have to pay two drainage boards to get rid of the water from Lincoln, North Caesteven, South Caesteven. That takes a large proportion of our council tax. So influence is the key word. We have to influence central government, please, to get these anomalies sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Austin. Councillor Seigandkirk.
Thank you, Chairman. In a season of goodwill, I'd actually like to thank councillor Parker. I never thought I'd be in this chamber and be able to support and vote for a Labour motion, so that's very, very kind of him, and I do that because it makes sense. As has been said by people in this chamber, there's nothing here you could really disagree with. I too have concerns around bullet point three about the raising of a cap on council tax, but I do recognise in there that we're talking about devolution of powers. As a Conservative, that's something that we've always advocated for, small government, small state, devolution of powers. It's nice to see our colleagues on the Labour benches finally come in line to what we've been saying for many, many years. So of course I'll support this. It's a sensible motion.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers at all? Councillor Davy.
I think in light of what councillor Poll has said, which sounds to me like it should need a second, I would agree wholeheartedly with that, and I think that we might want to consider how we incorporate that in this discussion, into the motion.
Councillor Parker.
Well, we've normal rules, I'm sorry. I've got no problem with that personally, but we've got rules.
We have, we have. We could.
Switch off councillor David, please. Thank you.
I thank councillor Parker for his understanding, and on his suggestion, I will move that as an amendment.
Thank you.
And then I'll happily second that.
Switch off.
But I'll happily second that proposal from councillor Poll.
So councillor Poll, are you suggesting an amendment? Right, well.
God blimey. I might as well stand it up, mightn't I?
Could you, could you tell us what your amendment is, please?
Around the council tax cap, that the IDB precept be taken out of the council tax cap for the lower-tier authorities.
Thank you. So we take the amendment first. All those in favour of the amendment? Councillor Poll, I understand councillor Parker hasn't heard you correctly, but could you please read it again?
I think he's just doing this to make me get more exercise in. That the IDB precept be taken out of the council tax cap for those authorities where it is relevant, because it's not just lower-tier authorities, there are some primary counties who deal with drainage boards and precepts.
Thank you. Did everyone hear that? Good. So we'll take the amendment first. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Fine, well, that is carried as an amendment, and that concludes our business. Sorry, sorry, I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon. I've got a cold. Right, so we'll go to the original motion. The substantia, yes, yes. The amendment becomes a substantive motion, so can we take a vote now on the substantive motion? All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Then that is carried. And please, members, would you check your pigeonholes before you go? I'm sure there might be one or two Christmas cards in there, and as I said earlier in my opening remarks, I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.